Dash a spell. Akin Boy. Janet Herron. Amy Marie Bishop Panisha. Richard Ortiz. Alfredo Castillo. Frederick Hodges. Aiden Nieves. Maria Valle. Maria Pereira. Samia Solomon. And Aida Martinez. Ernest Newton. We have a call.
Thank you. As we begin the meeting, I'd remind city councils that we've newly installed and made available to the public the ability to watch and view city council member, city council meetings live, and then I believe after that on YouTube, and I think tonight is our second meeting. So welcome the members of the public, not only those that are here, but those that may be watching, and let you know that our next scheduled meeting is not until September, the first Monday in September, will resume twice a month, which is the first Monday and the third Monday of every month. It's just in the summertime, in the months of July and August, that we only have one meeting, and this is August, and this is our one meeting. So with that, if you look to the printed agenda, which will stay on until the end, and as I indicated earlier, there may be matters because of the less scheduled meetings during the summer that might need attention, but we'll do them last. So is there a motion to look at it, approve the minutes of the last city council meeting? Made in second. Any discussion on this? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we've approved the minutes. Now, if you look at the first page, there are, there are four matters to consolidate and refer to appropriate committees if there's an appropriate motion. Made, is there a second? Are you with me, Madam Clerk? Jeanette. You want the first page? You want to move the addendum to? I don't have the addendum. Are those who referral, I don't, I don't. But there is one matter on there. It says communications. Okay, so why don't we do this? There's the matters on page one, and there's one matter that looks like a communication to be referred on, on the addendum 10424. Is everyone agreement on that? All right. So let the motion include the matter on the addendum known as 104-24 for appropriate referral in a second. Any comments on that? Are you with me? Yeah, I'll get it back to you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, give me an indication. All right. So now we're on the consent calendar. I'm going to reiterate this rule because maybe there's people that haven't heard it or just repeat it. A consent calendar under the council rules allows matters to be voted on with one motion and consolidation without comment, discussion, or debate. If someone is in disagreement that a matter is on the consent calendar, would like to be heard on it, they could, without reason or cause, act that it be moved off of the consent calendar and handle the normal course of business. Does any member of the council want to be heard on removing a matter from the consent calendar at this time? Councilwoman, I will recognize you. What matter would you like? Eighty, say it again, please. Say it again, please.
I'm sorry?
Say the items again, please.
Eighty-eight twenty-four. I'd like a roll call vote on that, and 10124. Am I doing something wrong? Did I give you the right information?
Okay, eighty-eight twenty-four. So having that, you see no other motion?
And 10124.
Say it again, please.
And 101-24. Two-four. Yes, thank you.
Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, can you please read the remaining matters on the consent calendar and to the record, and then without common objection or debate, we will vote on them, and then we'll take up the remaining matters. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you. 10324 Public Safety and Transportation Committee Report. Resolution for the City Council to support implementation of an EMT training pilot program for the Bridgeport Fire Department Recruit Class Number Four. Ninety-two-four Economic and Community Development Report with Grant Submission, State of Connecticut Department of Children and Family Youth Services Bureau Number 26532. Ninety-one twenty-four Economic and Community Development Report with Grant Submission, State of Connecticut Department of Children and Families Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Number 26540. Ninety-seven twenty-four Economic and Community Development and Development Committee Report, Grant Submission, Connecticut Department of Transportation, Active Transportation Micro Grants Program Number 26488. Eighty-eight twenty-four Miscellaneous Matter Committee Report Resolution to Central Council President Aiden Nieves Denied.
Madam Clerk, I think that one was removed. Am I correct? That one is not being voted on with the consent calendar.
Well, it says denied, so it's removed?
Eighty-eight twenty-four is removed.
Okay, thank you. Ninety-six twenty-four Miscellaneous Matter Committee Report, Refund of Access Payments, Forstone Three Five Zero LLC. One hundred twenty-four Miscellaneous Matter Committee Report, Settlement of Workers' Compensation Claim Regarding Richard Minfield, BFD Fire Inspector. That's it.
Okay. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, please give me an indication by hand or light. I see none. So those matters that remained on the consent calendar pass unanimously. Let's take the balance of them in order, the first one being, Madam Clerk, it was not read?
Eighty-nine twenty-four.
Eighty-nine twenty-four.
Eighty-eight.
I mean eighty-nine.
Not eighty-eight. Eighty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Eighty-eight?
Okay, eighty-eight twenty-four. Does someone want to move that matter?
Oh, to move it? I already did.
Roll call vote will be taken. Does somebody want to move it? Do you want to move it? 101, wait on. Anyone want to move eighty-eight twenty-four? Who's the chair on the committee? Anyway, do you want to move that matter, eighty-eight twenty-four?
Eighty-eight twenty-four.
Is there a second? She made it seconded by Akeem seconding. She made a motion, yeah. You want to be heard? You can be heard, Ernie, go ahead. Councilman Newton, you have the floor, and then we'll vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm asking my colleagues to follow the committee's report on denial. We haven't heard any reasons. We haven't heard anything, and I would just ask that you all would vote no, follow what the committee did, and let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Anyone else?
Say that the allegations in that center are video recorded. There's video evidence of it. There's a notarized affidavit under penalty of perjury. There were numerous witnesses, and so it speaks for itself, but I just, I just want a roll call vote. Thank you.
Oh, okay, I was going to do voice vote. Roll call, I guess, if it's asked for, is given. Roll call, yes is to support the motion, no is not to. And Madam Clerk, who wanted to be heard? Oh. Before we vote, Councilwoman?
Mayor, I just want to state that for a person who has an affidavit made under the penalty of perjury, the affidavit is incorrect because it is only one-sided, and I also have a written document, and council witnesses that were there, unlike Councilwoman Pereira, who has made this claim, she watched the video, she was not there for the context. And again, this is another political posturing, and when she did the same thing back in 2021, when she alleged I was buying votes with supportive contributions. So I just want the record to reflect that the councilwoman, in her angst to prove a point and to build a case against every single member of the city council regarding censuring matters, she has filed this on duly with unsupported documents. I mean, the gentleman that I was speaking to, there is reports of DTC members. She had received legal opinion by the city attorney's office that at a DTC meeting, I am not the council president, my name is not named, council president Aiden Nieves, it is Aiden Nieves, council, Aiden Nieves, the member, DTC member of the 137th and 585 Brook Street, and so forth. So I just want the record to reflect that, that I was not acting in my council capacity, but I was being harassed, verbally harassed, and antagonized by my own DTC member at that time. Let the record reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vote yes is to support the suspension. I guess it's the way it's termed, and vote no is not to. Who made the motion again? Amy Marie, how's the motion worded? The motion is to?
So continue to deny this motion, this agenda item.
Continue to deny. So yes is to continue to deny.
Yes.
Everyone understand? Madam Clerk, you have the floor for a roll call.
Yes, is to deny.
Scott Burns. Jorge Cruz. Denise Salomay.
No, a yes would be, would effectively not do that at this time.
Dash a spell. Rolanda Smith. Akin Boy. Janet Herron. Amy Marie Bishop Panisha. Richard Ortiz. Alfredo Castillo. Frederick Hodges. Aiden Nieves. Maria Valle. Maria Pereira. Samia Solomon. And Aida Martinez. Ernest Newton.
Okay, so that motion carries. What is the next one that was on the consent calendar that was taken off, Madam Clerk, that we call it now?
10124.
10124. Is there a motion?
Amy Marie.
Motion is made. Secretary Councilwoman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had an opportunity over the weekend. I did have some questions due to some phone calls that I had received with some misinformation regarding the last meeting. So I was able to, I got, Councilwoman Valle and myself had a good conversation on what took place at the last meeting, which I unfortunately was not able to attend. So we did get some clarification on it, and I just wanted to put it on the record that nothing is going to change according to where we are right now with the street sign naming. That's going to stay in place. If families would like to use the QR code to get a history on their loved ones, they can, but if they want to be a participant of the new Walk of Honor, they have the privilege to do so. We discussed the cost. So in saying all that, it answered my questions on the email that I had submitted, so I'm in favor of moving forward with this, with this item.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard? Councilman Newton?
Since she took it off, let her speak, and then I'll speak after.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you. You said?
I said, since Councilwoman Pereira asked to take it off, I will yield to her, and then when she finish, I'll, I'll speak.
Councilwoman, you want to be heard? Councilwoman Pereira, you have the floor.
Yeah, so this is a new commission, permanent commission established by ordinance, and it clearly states that the council president gets to appoint the first seven members that's in the ordinance. My issue is that, just like any other board or commission, the people being appointed should fill out an application, go through a background check. This is not a temporary committee. This is a permanent standing committee, and we should be able to interview them, just like we would any other, because we have to ratify the appointees, even though they're nominated by the council president. In addition, we have two city council members being appointed to serve on a commission, which is a violation of the city charter. No city council member may be appointed to any other board or commission. They can only serve on the council and the committees of the council, not any other entity. So I believe strongly this is a violation of the city charter, and that, that is the reason I will be voting no.
Thanks. Councilman Newton, or Councilman, whichever one you want.
Record, I would like to be a part of the committee. I forgot to mention that. I have stated it before, but for the record, I would like to be a part of this committee.
Okay, I have two more microphones before you, Ernie. You spoke once already?
I know.
All right, go ahead, and then I'll go to Maria, and then Scott, if it's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I support this, and I would just hope, Councilwoman, that we don't have to wait till people die to honor. You know, I think that you've got people that live, that do good work. It's something that we should look at, that a person shouldn't just have to die to be honored. You know, the old saying, say, give me my flowers while I'm alive. And I would just hope that that could be under consideration when you do this, but I think it's a worthy thing, and I would like to also serve on the committee.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valle, Maria Valle, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm standing because I have a problem with my knee, not because I want to be, okay? So. I'm okay, Lydia. Thank you for, thank you for caring so much. So again, this Walk of Honor, as many of you know, since 2022 that we have been working on this project. It's coming close to an end, and then again, the rumors begin, and I don't want to go into that, but you know, it's, it's too bad, but I want to thank Councilwoman Martinez for sending out a, a call, a message, so that I, I could again find out that this was happening. As I assured her, I am telling each and every one of you to please, next time, there is a concern. I think, I, I don't think, I know that I have been very honest in moving this forward, which as much help from certain individuals, okay? So we did our best to bring this forward. So again, hear it from me, those streets that are out there, Connecticut Avenue, Stratford Avenue, North Avenue, any street names that are there will remain there. I also want those of you that perhaps will vote no, and you have your right, and I know you don't have to tell us why you're voting no, but I want you to know one thing, and somebody told me today, let her rest in peace, right? But there's a young, there's a woman who was very, very important, very kind-hearted. She did many great things for the city of Bridgeport, the resident, and our youth, her children in the school system, right? Her name is Dee Cortello. May she rest in peace. And I mentioned, if you go on North Avenue and you see Dee Cortello Way, how many of you here would know who Dee Cortello is? And is there something on that sign that says who this woman is? There isn't. So here is an opportunity to take those names of individuals that are in the, these street names, and somehow connect them to this Walk of Honor. And this Walk of Honor is really to, to honor those individuals, unsung hero, that you do not know who they are. But they did something to open these doors here at 45 Laren Terrace and other, other areas. They opened those doors for opportunities. It could be the littlest thing. It could be the greatest thing, but these people are unsung hero, and those are the ones that we want to acknowledge. So again, rest assured that no street names will be removed. However, we want to add them to the barcode that will be used, the pedestal at the south side of this building, so that perhaps those of you that do not know who Dee Cortello is, will find out what a beautiful woman she was, and how she helped the children, and how that woman, years ago, in September 11th, when so many individuals lost their lives, right? 9/11. This woman, she was as tall as I was. She brought information. She taught our children at Beersley School through Baby John. Baby John was a little boy who lost his dad, and that little boy got to know the heart, the compassion, and the love that our children, the blacks, the whites, and the Hispanic. They didn't know that Baby John was well off. They didn't care. They brought toys, used toys to, to give to this little boy. And you know who was involved with that? Dee Cortello. So today, her name is over there on North Avenue, and I am glad, but I also want her name to be in this pedestal, in this cue bar, so that those of you that do not know Dee Cortello will get to know who Dee Cortello is. And Mayor, I'm asking for a roll call on this item as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Burns, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I have no problem with the premise of this initiative, but I think Councilwoman from the 138 brought up some important points about procedure and making sure the appointments are done properly, and including the consideration of having the council reps on this commission. It's not a committee, so it's a little different. So I would humbly suggest that maybe we send this back to committee to make sure it gets right, because we should do it correctly. That's all. Thank you.
Say it again, please. Was there, was there a motion in there? Oh, you said a second. Okay. All right. Councilwoman, you have the floor. Councilwoman Denise Taylor-Moore, you have the floor.
Yeah, I would just like to say something. I thought about this long and hard. I've been a person for many, many years that supported the signs, as Amy Marie knows, quite a few other people do know. I looked at this in full, as to what the Walk of Honor, what it would do here in the city, and how we would honor people. And the last thing that I thought about was what Ernie just said, to honor some of the people that are still here today, to acknowledge them, to give them this opportunity to smell their flowers while they're still alive, you know? So I am in total agreement with this now, because that's something that I truly believe in. And I worked very hard for almost three years trying to get a sign up for Walter Luckett, and it didn't happen. So I'm hoping that I'd be able to get him on that Walk of Honor. So I'm in agreement with you guys tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to go this way first. Amy Marie, you have the floor. Councilwoman, Amy Marie.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank everyone for bringing up the questions and looking for your support on this. To Ernie's, and Denise had mentioned his questions about that they're alive and not, that was discussed in committee. You had brought that up back in committee, and it was reassured that this would not be just for those that have died. So it's for the living and the dead, but it's for everyone, and that's been a process, and it's also written in the paperwork that you were given during the committee, and then it's available for everyone's copies, once they get it, once this is approved tonight, and then the mayor signs off on it tomorrow. Correct, Mayor? But I appreciate that, and it's, it's something that's been worked on faithfully for a long time, and then weekly meetings. So everything's getting done with the approval of department heads and council president, and the mayor's staff is well aware of it also, including the city attorney's office. So we've been hitting all the marks to get everything checked off properly and procedurally to do this. And the committee that was chosen, it's pretty similar to the CDBG. They're picked and voted on in full council. It did go through committee, and it was approved in committee, so it comes back to the full council membership. So I'm hoping that everyone will do that, and these are not permanent positions. They will be turned over every couple of years.
Thank you. Councilman?
Yes, I just want some clarification on, so, because I'm in the midst of a petition for a sign, so we still will be able to do the signs?
Yes.
It won't never get, it's not for a temporary time, like in three years, the signs will be eliminated or anything like that?
It would take an act of council, an act of council by ordinance, to remove the street signage program. So an act of council, an act of council.
All right. Thank you.
To remove the, to remove the ordinance, to remove the street signage program.
Maria, I am with you. Councilwoman, do you want to continue, you want to continue to be heard?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, and even though, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to respond to Councilwoman Hodges, and I just want to remind everyone for the record, it will take an act of council to remove the street signage program, through ordinance, through this body. Also, it is not a commission. It is not a commission. It is a durational committee, which will only take action once a year. Once a year, will this take action, just like the CDBG committee. This is not a full-on, full-blown commission, and we do not vet our CDBG citizens' union members. This was vetted through the city attorney's office, and it did have legal counsel through the whole process. So I just want to remind everyone that the special meeting notice for the, for the July 21st meeting went out. People attended, individuals attended, and there's some confusion as to this was created secretly on the day of the regular miscellaneous meeting, and it was not. I want the record to reflect that misinformation and gossip does not dictate legislative processes, and it is sad that phone calls are not made, and I am glad that Councilwoman Martinez put it in an email, and Maria Valle answered in an email, and they had a conversation for clarity. That's what's supposed to happen. And the fact that, that we're going back and forth on it, and I just want to say that it's been worked on since 2022, and those that have wanted to participate have participated, and those that have shown interest have not. Michelle Lyons signed down to it at the ordinance committee. So if you wanted to be a part of this membership and part of this committee, you had an opportunity, because in the minutes, it says that they met on Wednesdays at the central grants office, and anyone's welcome to attend. It was not a secret meeting, because it's in the minutes from the ordinance meeting. So nothing is done in secret. Everything was done exclusively in public, and the conversations have happened in public. Now, I know that the question is whether or not this is an acting committee for a long time. It's not. It's just a durational committee for that one process, for that one time that the nominations get voted on. That's it. It's not like the street sidewalks, where if it's submitted, it goes to the council body all year long. It's just one time, once a year, they're going to take an action and review applications. That's it. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman, did you want to be heard?
Thank you. There's a lot of clarity here, and I'm glad we're hearing that, and I did vote no the last time, and I'm thinking about it at this point. To honor our families is necessary in this city. We've done it for years. To do another process, it's fine. I really don't care. I may vote yes for this, but I'm just saying I have my right to vote the way I wish to vote for my own reasons. I've got, I've had questions. Some of them were answered, and we'll just follow and see how this goes.
Thank you. I see, I'll take Councilman Newton and Councilwoman Pereira, and then we'll vote. Councilman Newton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for clarifying that signs can still go up, because Councilwoman Martinez and I had already start working on for the firemen that, not firemen, but for the Public Works, Bobby Kennedy, his family, they wanted us to do one in honor of him. So that's what we were working on, and I'm glad to hear Councilwoman Amy Marie Panichia say it can be for living people also, because I'm one that believes that people should get their flowers while they're alive. And so I'm glad to hear that, and I will support it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pereira, Council President Nieves, Councilwoman Maria Valle, and then we'll vote.
Hi. I just want to say that this is a permanent committee established by ordinance. No difference, the Charter Commission is a very brief commission. They still had to put an affidavit.
They still had to put in applications. They still had to be vetted. They still, they still had, we had a vote on them. And in addition, we're required to have minority party representation on this commission. We don't even know what the party affiliations are here, no different than the charter, which is February to July. We have to have minority party representation. They have to notice a meeting. They have to have agendas. They have to have minutes. This is an absolute. And again, I don't have a problem with the, what we're trying to do here. I think it's great. I don't like the street signs. I think this is much better. But to appoint council people to a committee created by the council, I believe vehemently is against the city charter. And the fact that we didn't get to interview any of the candidates. We have to ratify them tonight, but there was no application. We didn't meet them. We don't know what the party affiliation is here because I have a feeling we don't have minority party. A third of them must be from minority party. So my issue is with the process, not the, what's being done here. I think it's great, but I don't agree with the process that has been put upon us. And that's why I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valle, you want to be heard? Then we'll take ID and then we'll vote. No? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, it is not a commission and we do not vet the citizens' union members. We don't have them apply. The council members elect who they want to represent in their district. And we do not interview the citizens' union members. We just vote on the list of names as a body. So it is just a committee that takes a durational action. Just like when I appoint the CDBG special committee. It's not a standing committee, but only a durational committee for the purposes of taking an action by ordinance, which is the CDBG vote and to hear the CDBG items. If I don't create it, it's done by the economic development committee. That is how it's done. So with that said, Mayor, I just want to make an amendment to the list of appointees. We're going to be removing Ms. Bobby Brown and adding Councilwoman Martinez because it was spoken with the councilwomen and we're just gonna add Councilwoman Martinez to replace Councilwoman Brown because she did not reply to the, to the committee. And again, this is not a commission. This is a committee just for a durational time for the process of applications of nomination.
Thank you. Okay, is there a regular vote on this?
To amend, one oh one twenty-four, to remove Ms. Bobby Brown and add Councilwoman Anita Martinez to the committee.
Is this an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
All right, vote on the amendment first. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, raise your hand. Janelle. All right, now the main motion.
I make a motion to approve as amended, Mayor.
Is there a second?
And that's a roll call.
Seconded by Councilman Newton. Listen, let me run the meeting. If you speak out of order, I'm not gonna let you speak at all. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, next matter. Thank you. Eighty-eight twenty-four, Madam Clerk, needs to be read into the record as part of the consent calendar. And I will have a vote on it since we missed it. Eighty-eight twenty-four to clean up the agenda tonight. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Eighty-eight twenty-four, miscellaneous matter committee report resolution to central.
I thought you said we didn't do it.
No, not me.
Everybody's good?
Yeah.
All right, we're done with the consent calendar. Is everyone agreed?
It wasn't that one, Mayor. It wasn't that one.
All right, city attorneys?
It's one oh one, one oh one.
No, no, no. It's eighty-eight.
No, it's this one.
Okay, listen, I'm gonna go on to the next item. You guys figure it out before the end of the meeting, that's fine. Next item on the agenda is one oh two twenty-four. Is there a motion? One oh two twenty-four. Is there a second? Does this need a roll call? Roll call, vote. You can be heard. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just want to say that there's a lot of talk about importance of adding an ethics provision. But in the meeting, with this appointee was there, she filled out her application, notarized that she was a Republican on February fifth. She did not apply to become a Republican until February 27th, which was clearly shown on her summary card. She did not become a Republican until May 27th. So I don't understand how that is okay. She literally stated she was a Republican when she signed her application on February 4th and didn't even apply to change her party
You guys figure it out.
Until February 27th. And she got unanimously voted out of committee. And that's a serious ethical violation. And for that reason, I will be a no.
Anyone else want to be heard? Look, did you want to be heard? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
No, no, no. It's a roll call. It's an appointment.
You're right. I stand corrected. Let's do a roll call, Madam Clerk. A yes is in favor of the appointment and a no is against it. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Jorge Cruz. Denise Salomoy. Lashas Bell. Rolanda Smith. Ouch, she's on here. Akin Boy. Janet Herron. Amy Marie Bishop Anisha. Richard Ortiz. Alfredo Castillo. Fred Hodges. Aida Nieves. Maria Valle. Maria Pereira.
No.
Samia Suliman. Enaida Martinez. Ernest Newton. Okay, pass.
Okay. Next matter, next matter is Thank you very much. Next matter is matters to be acted upon is ninety-three twenty-four. But I know there's a point of, yeah, we're not gonna do that one yet. I think Councilman Burns wants to do the, add the capital items to the agenda first. Is that correct? Councilman Burns, you have the floor. And there might be one other matter that we missed. I'm waiting to hear from the city clerk before the end of the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of adding two items to the agenda.
Motion's made, seconded. What, just elaborate a little bit on what the item is, please?
Sure, absolutely. The two items are related to capital bond action. That these items will be referred to committee for next Monday's meeting.
So we're making one motion to add two.
Is that okay?
Yeah. So it's a consolidated motion to add items that are to referral to committee only. Obviously, we already indicated there's not another meeting until September. And the finance director's advised me, it's his request and he thinks for a matter of reasons to probably do too detailed, that it's better these matters get to committee sooner rather than later for capital borrowing as a matter. So the motion made and seconded, there's been some discussions. This is just to add them to the agenda for the purposes of referral. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, these two. All right, now do you want to make a motion to refer?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to refer two items to the Budget and Appropriations Committee dealing with capital improvement bonding items.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Newton. It's my understanding the city clerk has a written copy of each of these. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? She does. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so those matters are referred. Clerk has a copy. The last item on the agenda, unless, unless there's another one that we missed. Did we miss one? Okay. So now we're matters to be acted upon, which is ninety-three twenty-four, which is contracts committee report re resolution authorizing the execution of the municipal beneficial account services agreement. Is there a motion? All right, all the council members have a copy. You're amending something and everyone has a copy. The city clerk has a copy, Madam Clerk? No? Will you provide a copy to the clerk if, assuming it passes? Okay. So motion, either way, you should provide a copy to the clerk. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing, not all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, raise your hand to give me an indication. Passed unanimously. I stand here wondering if there's anything else before the council tonight. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please log in. Councilwoman Amy Marie, is no for the last. All right. We stand at attention for an item that, I'm waiting for a council member. Do you want to move something? Councilwoman Martinez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add item number ninety-nine dash twenty-four.
Ninety-nine dash twenty-four.
Charter revision draft report.
To be acted on tonight?
We need a roll call vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
We need a roll call vote.
Okay. Motion's made, seconded, add to the agenda. I'm not gonna do a roll call now. We'll do a roll call on the main motion.
It has to be by two-thirds.
You guys want a roll call? Okay. So there's a motion to add, there's a second. This is the purpose, to add to the agenda for the purpose of voting on it tonight. Madam Clerk, are you with me? All right. Roll call, vote. Yes is to add to the agenda, no is not. Does the clerk have a copy? What they're voting on right now.
It's the, it's the draft of the charter revision report.
Okay. Yes is to vote to suspend the rules to add to the agenda and no vote is not to. Madam Clerk, you have the floor. Before you vote, Madam Clerk, give me a second. Councilwoman, you have the floor.
Waiting on Tommy for clarification.
Yeah.
We're clear? Tommy?
No. The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to add this matter to the agenda. There was an act for a roll call vote, which I've entertained. And at your leisure, we can call. Yes is to add it to the agenda. No is not to. Madam Clerk has the floor.
Scott Burns. Jorge Cruz. Denise Salomoy. Lashas Bell. Akin Boy. Janet Herron. Janet? Amy Marie Bishop Anisha. Richard Ortiz. Alfredo Castillo. Fred Hodges. Aida Nieves. Maria Valle. Maria Pereira. Samia Suliman. Enaida Martinez. Ernest Newton. Okay, that's a first.
Yeah. So it's added to the agenda. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Enaida, come second, Ernest? Ernest, you second?
Hold on. Let's get a motion and a second first. Motion's made, seconded by Councilman Newton.
Okay. Thank you. Sure, okay.
Councilman, you have the, Councilman, you want to be heard?
I make a motion to substitute item ninety-nine twenty-four with the following amended resolution language. It's this copy we all have. Amend by substitution. Yes. Yes. Aye. And I make a motion to further amend item ninety-nine twenty-four to include the following language. Be it further resolved that the city council hereby recommends and empowers the Charter Revision Commission to consider amend and revise any charter provision not specifically mentioned in this resolution that it deems necessary and appropriate for the efficient and effective operation of city government. Yes.
There is so much bad voice that we cannot hear Akin Boy and what he is saying. So we can respect and listen so that we can properly vote on the amended agenda that is before us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Be it further resolved that the city council hereby recommends and empowers the Charter Revision Commission to consider amend and revise any charter provision not specifically mentioned in this resolution that it deems necessary and appropriate for the efficient and effective operation of city government.
Floor, when she's ready to call, vote, call, vote.
We just really have to get really prepared with these amendments and they should be done before they come to the floor because it causes a lot of discrepancies in the record.
And the woman that we had doing the stuff for us died, okay?
Tell me what you read.
It's true. So the last one, which is number five, is to approve the whole package?
Yes.
To approve the whole package?
Correct.
Okay. Oh, no, this is, then this will be the sixth one then. What was this one that you just?
Okay, it was a motion to approve.
No, tell me the last one that we just did.
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay.
There were two, there were two amendments offered. One was the document that got passed out to everyone that's text written on the computer. Then he made a second motion to amend the language that he read out loud, which has now been given to the clerk. And now there's a motion to approve as amended with both amendments included.
That this is the one that is coming?
And that's where we're at.
Okay.
Or do you want to be heard? Then we'll vote.
That's number six.
Joe, I would be, Mr. Mayor, I would be remiss if I didn't personally thank the Charter Revision Commission for outstanding work. And I want you all to know that, as you can see, our charter is probably as old as, it's old. And what I would recommend to this body is that we should come up with a process. Well, we don't wait. We should have a charter revision set up so we can look at this charter, bring it up to the 21st century than the way we do it now. But I didn't want us to leave here without thanking the men and women who put a lot of time in and put together a great version of where we want to go in the future. So I just wanted to thank you guys and gals for
Thank you.
Two points of order. We could do it after the vote, if we may. Yeah, after the vote.
I think we need to put a bell up there for you so you can, so you can see. It rings. I just want to say thank you to those council members that were part of this process and the coming back of this item and working on it and giving the recommendations. And to the committee chairs for making sure that we stayed on task and on time during this process. I think there has been some confusion about what has been going on, but I think those council members understood where we are in this process. And as we send this back to the commission, again, to hear what our recommendations have been, it is my hopes that residents will become more engaged in this process. I know that we've put out flyers and an email blast and people have tried to reach out to individuals. Our public hearings were not as robust as expected. But I think it's going to be the council's work to get this item when we get it back and it gets back on the ballot to make sure that we get these changes passed because there are a lot of changes that are going to positively impact the city. And I just want to thank you all for taking the time for reading, addressing, and giving your input. And again, to the Charter Revision Commission. I know you've worked really hard. The chairs have been at almost every meeting, face and John. So I thank you for your due diligence and commitment. Though I may be agitated at times, it's not agitated with the individuals. It's the process that agitates. that agitates me because it's so much work to be done and when there's little voices and it's only the same two voices, you just think that nobody else is paying attention. But thank you for always paying attention. You are greatly appreciated. And thank you again. And thank you council members for being involved, for making this happen finally.
Okay. I just want to say to now add the elimination of three agencies, tons of other stuff about purchasing, the Board of Public Purchases purchasing rules and they have 15 days, I think, to do this? This has already been very rushed. It's been kind of messy and sloppy and now we want them to do all this in 15 days? I don't think that's reasonable. So I will be a no. Thank you.
I have a question. I just heard her say 15 days. When the commission gets it, when does it come back to us for a final vote?
I'm pretty sure.
I too want to thank the charter revision commission for their work, my co-chair for her phenomenal job, city council president Eugene for going to all the meetings, Cody, Ashley, Anthony, Mark, Taisha, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Hate to bring it up at this late moment, but we did try to remove what's now chapter 18, sections four and five. They're related to the Klein, which is no longer under the jurisdiction of the Board of Library. So I don't know if that's something we want to address tonight or let the commission take over on those two items. Not major, but something to clean up.
Yes, Mayor, I just want to stand and do this properly. We're leaving the main ingredient out, which was Ashley who bid the majority of preparing us for all of this. So. A lot of the home care work, a lot of the council work, I think, so I can't want to feel that we've not been doing a good job. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, because I would recommend that we let the, because when it leaves us, it goes back to the charter commission, which will set up a joint meeting with the city council and the charter revision. We can address that there.
Madam Clerk, you have the floor. Vote yes to support the motion is amended. Vote no is not to. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Could you clear who motion and who's second?
I'm sure Akin's second.
And Aida and Akin. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Scott Burns.
Yes.
Jorge Cruz.
Yes.
Denise Salomoy.
Yes.
Vashas Bell.
Yes.
Akin Boy.
Yes.
Janet Herron.
Yes.
Amy Marie Bishop Panichia.
Yes.
Richard Ortiz.
Yes.
Alfredo Castillo.
Yes.
Fredt Hodges.
Yes.
Aiden Nieves.
Yes.
Maria Valle.
Yes.
Maria Pereira.
Yes.
Samia Suliman. Enaida Martinez. Ernest Newton.
Motion carries. My understanding that's the last.
Punto esto junto para que no se te pierda.
My understanding that's the last meeting. Scott, Councilman Burns has a point and then we'll likely adjourn.
I hear you, brother. Two points. One was brought to my attention that perhaps 8924 was not read into the record.
Thank you for bringing that up. It was a little unclear to me. So you want to bring it up?
I just want to make sure.
Make a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
It was on the consent calendar, it was taken off. Let's just do it regularly. Is there a second? 8924, it's unclear whether it was voted on or not, as either part of the consent calendar or not. I've asked three times, been unable to get a clear whether it's an important matter or not. I think it should be voted on. It's been brought to my attention, Scott, 8924.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? I don't think it's controversial, but anybody has a right to speak on it. Scott Burns, 8924, somehow we missed it. Seconded by Amy Marie. Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. So that should clean up any misconception, ambiguity, or confusion. Madam Clerk, okay. And if that is, is there a motion to adjourn?
9324, did we act on more than the amendment?
9324, unless somebody corrects me, was handled properly. Is that correct? Anybody want to take issue with that? All right.
Amended in.
It's reinforced that we handled it the right way. If there's a need to correct it, we can do it at the next meeting, but everyone seems to be in agreement. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Thanks.